Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock and it is the 27th of January. It's a town of Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. Would everybody please stand further right? May I have a motion for the approval of our fire minutes from January 6, 2025, and from -- we have two meetings: a regular and a three-organization meeting. Thanks, Amelie. May I second?
Second.
Thanks, Chant. Any comments or changes? Or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes passes unanimously. County and town tax bills are due without penalty. Well, they were mailed out on the 7th and they're due without penalty until the last day of February, the 28th this year. Is it? Yeah, the 28th. Payable either here or you can mail them in. After the 28th of February, there's penalties assessed. All dogs living in Rhinebeck need a license and they must be kept on a leash at all times. And lastly, if you're thinking about doing a home renovation project or anything on your property, call our building department. You may need a permit. Anybody else have any? We have a presentation here from our Historic Architectural and Preservation Committee that I'd like to bump up to the front of this. It's on discussion as Tab 20, Historic Preservation Handbook. This is a handbook that the committee prepared. It's really a beautiful piece of work. Kathy Ember and Jim Levy are planning for places, worked with the committee. And the committee is not a board, it's a committee, so all of the recommendations in here are just the recommendations and guidelines for dealing sensitively with renovation projects to historic properties. And they think it's something we can all really benefit from. So I think Kathy and Jim are going to give a brief presentation. And again, this is Tab 20. Here's the backup. Hi, Kathy.
Thanks so much. So thank you for being here tonight to talk about the Town Rhinebeck Historical and Archaeological Handbook. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kathy Ember. I'm founding Frithl, Planning for Places. I was spearheading this effort with HAPAC and letting me know Jim Levy, who was also involved as the planer down there. I just want to thank the Town Board, you know, for its concerted effort to balance the needs of historic preservation and also the need for change at the same time. HAPAC was invaluable working on this. And we also wanted to thank the town historian, Merida, the town historian, and also had some work with historic preservation specialists as well. So we worked on this for about eight months. We used photographs and historic illustrations from the town throughout the document. And it's really designed to encourage property owners to preserve the town's important historic heritage. So there's discussions about maintenance, repair, and preservation of historic properties, the town's laws related to historic preservation, and available resources. And the goal is to inspire voluntary actions by property owners to protect their properties. So in the handbook, there's this number of sections. The introduction is intended to be an executive summary. It talks about the benefits of historic preservation, the resources, and a typical project development review process. We also provide information on the town's history and what HAPAC can do for assistance, the summary of codes. There's more details in the appendices. And then we have a design standards section that looks at key terms and principles, building design and site design. And it's usually utilizing some documents that the town already has in place, like the Town of Rhinebeck Design Standards, the RCO overlay. And it's also based on the U.S. Secretary of Interior's experience with historic property. So it's going to be used. It'll be available in hard copy once you approve it. We're thinking in the town hall and libraries, we'll provide six copies. But it can also be downloaded online as well. And we also have a two-page summary document as well that provides an overview if people just want to look at that. So there are a number of different flow charts around that explains the process, where we can be used as a resource, and what people need to do, like go to the town building department and as an administrator. So I said it'd be quick. Can I answer any questions?
Will HAPAC be available as a resource for people? I mean, if people have questions?
Absolutely.
Can they reach out to HAPAC?
They absolutely can.
Or go to a meeting or get information?
Yeah, there's a section about how HAPAC can be of assistance. And that's in that Assistance and Codes document. And HAPAC is definitely available to provide just bond, even if you didn't have to go to HAPAC for a review.
You wanted to get opinions and...
So I mean, it's a really invaluable resource to help encourage people to maintain what's
historically important about their residences or properties.
Yep.
It's not no strong army, no laws here is, again, trying to foster voluntary, you know, honoring. So I read it. I actually read the whole thing and I think it's really wonderful. And I think Kathy and Warren and Marty, I think you guys did a really great job. So thank you.
My, uh, tell me about that.
Would you please?
I did a lot of historic preservation work in the 80s and 90s, including with tents in towns and cities. So my expertise is obviously dated and all that. But I never saw anything remotely like this. This is just extraordinary. My only comment is that the tag is too modest.
Okay, thank you.
It's more than a handbook. I couldn't come up with a satisfactory title. The best I could do was guide and handbook, but I think it ought to be beefed up as extraordinary resource. Thank you all, committee and Planning for Places.
Thank you, the committee chair. Many of them are here.
Oh, shucks, Kathy. We do it all the time.
No, it's nothing.
No, it's really something to be proud of.
It is.
It is, for sure. They were, they're wonderful. We're very, very fortunate.
We're fortunate to have them.
Absolutely, we are.
Yeah.
Clone them.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Clone them, the two of them.
No, yeah, they're great. Any other questions? Bob, yeah?
Hi. First of all, I read the report. It's excellent. And thank you and the committee for all your work. Two things. Once it's approved, will it be posted on the town website?
Yes. It actually is there right now as a draft, but the final will be posted.
Okay. The other thing is, on pages four and five, there are the development steps.
Yes.
Some of the steps, when you're reading it online, are cut off and some are missing. Is there any way it could be amended, modified?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things we're working on. It's meant to be a two-page spread so that you would see both sides of that chart. So we'll definitely work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good comments. Any other? All right, so I think we have nothing but praise and gratitude. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know you spent a lot of time. So, gosh, let's go right to, is this on the agenda? Or we, no, we just wanted to lay it out and adopt it at our next meeting, right? We wanted to make sure the public knew we were doing this, what the intent was, and we will approve it at our next meeting in February. We'll have it on for discussion and approval at our next meeting in February. Okay. I think I'm going to further jump around because I know that a lot of people are here for some discussion items. So let's go to discussion items. I just wanted to update everybody that the Hillside Fire Department let me know last week or the week before that they're seeking to dissolve the fire department. I think that's the right word, within the next year or so. Due to declining membership, they have been a stone, you know, a pillar of this community for fire since 1939. So I think that's what, about 86 years? And they, like many other volunteer fire departments in New York State, are losing members as members age out. They have a beautiful firehouse and a lot of equipment. We'll be working with an attorney to work with the fire department to make sure that we take care of the fire protection district and it becomes the town's responsibility, I think, to absorb all of the fire department and fold it into our fire protection district and to provide coverage. So we'll be working on that to help them close their doors and look for next steps. And we're very grateful for all the service and we will do our best to work with them to bring this to a good conclusion.
I just want to add one thing. There's a couple of boundary issues, I think, between fire districts of Hillside and...
Thanks, Kathy. Thank you.
Between Hillside and Rhine Cliff. There are a number of lots along the river. They're in both districts.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
We want to fix that.
Well, we knew that, we knew this from, but when we looked at our fire protection district before, and I think it needs a means and bounds and revision.
I agree.
We'll see if that's something that we can take care of. But our first, our first priority is really making sure that Hillside is supported and the people in the district, both our fire production district and their district, are received adequate fire coverage.
Yep.
And, you know, they've been very forthright and open about this. And it's a little sad, but understandable, and it's certainly happening all over the state. And we will do what we can to support them and come to a good outcome. Okay, we did our historic preservation fall foliage marathon. I think a lot of people are here for that. We got another, Matt here, here?
Mm-hmm.
Hi, thanks for coming. We got another application for fall foliage marathon. And over the past three, four years, we've had numerous complaints from residents on the route about lack of safety, lack of noticing. And we had people on both sides saying, yes, we love this, we want it, and other people who aren't so thrilled about it. So I wanted to put it on for discussion, see if the Town Board members had any questions for that, maybe take public comments, I don't know. But to me, Matt, why don't you come on up? You're a for-profit business, right?
Yeah, we are.
So my biggest issue is we're lending out town roads for a for-profit business that isn't here in our community and for profit that doesn't benefit our community.
Okay. I mean, I think we've been giving money to Michael J. Fox Foundation and the Northern Duchess Hospital for 13 years now. I think we have countless Rhinebeck residents that run NBA.
It's the profit issue, I think, for me.
I mean, we're just like any other event or business or sports team or organization.
Yeah, we don't let out anybody using our infrastructure for free to make money. That's my point.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, what do you guys think?
What about the use of solid fields?
They pay for it. It's paid for.
I mean, we're probably one of the only events, that I understand, according to police, that have actually paid for the police for every single year we've ever done this, from every other event in the town, or in the village, I understand. We're the only ones that pay, from what I can tell, with the exception of the firm.
Is there any other route you can come up with? I mean, a lot of this route, problem is last year it went over an area where a bridge was being put in and it was problematic. And now you have people running down South Mill Road. The road has collapsed. Have you been down there?
It's the same route we've been using for...
Have you been down since?
Yeah, because we had to reroute it last year.
Have you been down South Mill Road since June or July? The road collapsed.
I know. We did a race in October and we had to reroute it at that point last year.
Last October, yeah.
This past October?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think like the issue is, the issue really started two years ago when we had some state police officers that weren't familiar with the protocol that didn't allow a very few, very few residents to get back to their homes, which we corrected this past year. And the roads are completely open, as they always have been, with the exception of the two crossings in the village. So all the town roads remain completely open as they always have.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for coming. And I'll be very clear, my family is all one, my husband runs it every year for the past decade. We love the event. We have friends and family come visit and participate. We see a lot of enthusiasm from the crowds in Rhinebeck. And to my mind, I understand your concern, but the way I see it too is that roads are a public space, that they're supposed to be there for runners and walkers and bikers as well. And due to the nature of how people drive, it's basically 99.9% of the year when they're not very walkable or runnable or bikeable. And this is kind of one three-hour window on a morning of a holiday weekend that we're asking people to just take a little bit more care as they enter and exit their driveway. And I've seen the letters complaining and I've seen some assertion that kind of the fabric of the community is based in kind of a right to farm and people need to be able to use their equipment, and that's not conducive to working with runners. But I'll just say it again, I think it's a very de minimis disruption. And I think that with kind of maybe a more concerted effort to let people know where the route is, maybe send postcards to everyone along the route ahead of time, we could even consider changing the time if that's, I don't, I can't speak for the farmers along the route. I know one of the people's complaint is literally my neighbor touches my property. And I'm sad to say, I haven't met her before, but I'm going to go knock and find out and say, what can we do to make you happy about this event like me? But, you know, it could start earlier, it could start later, if that's helpful for the farmers.
We actually, we actually used to start later and at the request of Sergeant Dunn, we actually moved it earlier because we wanted less people on the road as the trains come later in the day and the farmers markets open, like he wanted it to do it earlier, which we had no problem.
What day is it? It's on Sunday?
It's on Sunday.
Yeah. Well, the Town Board, it's before the Town Board, because the Town Board approves all permits. So this will happen in the fall and I guess he wanted to get the permit out. What are you guys thinking?
Well...
To what?
To approve it.
Chant?
I take your point about for-profit business, but I guess a matter of policy, and if you make exceptions if you wish. Clearly, there's support for it in the community, so I can pass that issue. I am more concerned, though, about the inconvenience to people on the road and so forth. And one of the thoughts I had, Matt, as I read your material and I read the application, is whether it would be useful to think about rerouting and perhaps an event of a different length, a different length. About 20 years, 100 years ago, when I was young, I did quite a lot of just this kind of thing. I wasn't a competitive runner or a marathoner, but I went to these things. This was back in the day when Frank Shorter and Bill Rogers could be paid to come and... So I'm, I'm inclined to be in favor of it, but I'd like to find a way to soften the impact on people along the way who need to get in and out and so forth. And I've never seen your race, which I sort of apologize, but I play golf in some way. I'm wanting for it to start and I get home after the gun. So the question that arose, out of all of this, and I'm sorry to ramble, is there's presumably no magic, at least I don't think so as a participant in some of these things back in the 70s and 80s, to it being a half marathon or a certain number of kilometers and so forth. Whether there would be a more suitable route that you could lay out and run your event on that would be sexy enough to draw enough people, but you couldn't use the term half ultra, half marathon, because it's not a half marathon. Maybe it's the Rhinebeck eight-mile race, or whether there's anything to do along those lines to make this easier.
Do you change the route, Chant?
Yeah. There's really not, unfortunately, they're like, we're in the village as much as we can be. There's really nowhere else to go, like from a road standpoint. We've looked, I mean, we've done it like upriver, which Sergeant Dunn and I decided is way more dangerous because that came around, you know, where people are coming up the bridge over there. That's like way worse.
And South Mill Road is more safe because it's closed than what it is.
And I was like, I mean, it's really, I mean, I think I saw 13 cars total this year while I was out there for literally the whole time. It's not very trafficked over there. If the section that's more traffic, where we don't seem to have any issue, is like down past the library and coming around past the train station, but we've never had any issues there. It's really just...
Well, on Sunday, it's quieter.
Yeah, which is why we moved it earlier.
One of the things that I think is the case, although I didn't anticipate this thought that maybe, I'd like to know if there are any people here who have been complaining about the inconvenience and whether those people want us to put a stop to it or want us to find solutions.
Can I speak next?
Yeah.
Please come up.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, how are you? It's not, a lot of us are here from Mill Road. Actually, with all car tools, save money.
Save cars on the road.
Exactly, exactly. First of all, is it a matter of record if I say, "Thank you, Bob, for everything. Thank you for the winter. Thank you for helping us get through the bridge construction." You really are, not that these people are not important.
No, he's, he's a lot more important.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. An official. He's an incredible guy. I'm reporting in every day when Bridgerton is doing.
You're going to vote for him then this year.
No, don't.
He has to run for reelection this year.
I'm aware. Actually, we're a voting block in our house, so. Other people are going to talk about other issues. But I ran nonprofits for 45 years and I did these kind of events for, you know, '68. And I feel like I've done it since I was six. And my question is, why, and I hope nobody hears from the hospital. Hospitals are for-profit business that the executive gets paid in the millions. They're going out of business, they're being bought out by Upton. I don't know why we're making contributions to the hospital and bragging about it. And then the second thing is, why Michael J. Fox? Are there that many people have Parkinson's in Rhinebeck?
My father died from Parkinson's, that's why.
But that's not Rhinebeck. It's okay, my son has...
They're one of the best charities in the entire world.
But they're not Rhinebeck. And so when they, when they say it's a local event, I'm saying you gave to a profit-making place where the employees are making millions of dollars and Upton is buying them anyway. So they're not even well-run. And I mean, all I have to do is talk to 10 doctors and find out all about new fans. And then, and then Michael J. Fox, which has, if I'm not mistaken, they don't even have, I looked, they don't even have an office nearby. So I wonder, my concern is, maybe if we're going to do it, I do agree that we shouldn't use public roads, maybe if we're going to do it, get to local events, the local nonprofits, like the food capture.
Or maybe it's a donation to the park fund.
Exactly. Meanwhile, I live right where they, I've seen this, I've lived here five years and I watch this, and all I can say as a mother, is this one truck coming down that road that's going to kill the first person. And, and Bob, how many times have I told you we need a speed thing there? I said this so often that you're sick of hearing from me. And I know who the speeders are.
Mill Road, right by the bridge.
I live right by the bridge. The beautiful new bridge. And Bob, how many times have I complained about the speeding? It's one, you know, one accident away from somebody getting killed. We don't even walk our dog anymore on the road, either just share it. We can't because it's too dangerous. We even, we know who it is. So, you know, to say that nothing's happened so far, or it's safe, only 13 cars went down, is really not true because it's a very, we know it's a dangerous stretch of road. And you've tried often to get it to calm down. So that's what I have to say. And I'm kind of like, not all that excited that we're giving money to the hospital. That's just my, my thought.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things. So we have a long, we've had a longstanding relationship with the Northern Duchess Hospital. We do not have to give them money by any stretch of the imagination. They have provided us with volunteers for 13 straight years, which is more than I can say for a lot of organizations that I've dealt with over the years. So that's why we've given money to them. I get that they, they used to be an independent organization and now they've changed hands. So if we don't want to do that, I totally understand. I mean, I believe the Fairgrounds has a relationship with the Northern Duchess Hospital, which is why the Fairgrounds allowed us to use the Fairgrounds because of that relationship for years. So I guess it's like a, it's not, you know, something that has to be that way. Like I said, Michael J. Fox Foundation, I'm sure there are people in Rhinebeck who have been affected by Parkinson's, like every other place in the country.
Do you donate or do the runners donate?
Both.
How much of a donation do you give? Like, what's the ballpark?
It varies depending on the year. Like, it varies, honestly.
A ballpark-ish. $1,000 to each?
More than that.
$2,500 altogether?
Uh, more than that. Depends on the year, like some years it's been $2,500, some years it's been $40,000.
$40,000 from Rhinebeck?
It can depend, it can depend on like how much people online are registering, like that are, you know, the police is like a vehicle for other things, so it kind of, it varies. Every, like, we've always given money on top of what people are donating to.
I also just wanted to point out, I don't think the money goes to Northern Duchess Hospital, it goes to the Northern Duchess Hospital Foundation.
That is correct.
And that is a community fund that helps local Rhinebeck people who are unable to afford services.
Correct.
So that's, that's what, that, it's not, now, I mean, we can sit here and talk all day and we can call Luigi Mantone, ask him to show up and give his opinion too on whether there should be a CEO making $3 million while there has to be a Northern Duchess Hospital Fund to cover local indigenous people, but... I don't think he's available to come. So unfortunately...
I don't think he'll come.
But honestly, just, I feel like we got off on a little tangent getting angry at the specific recipients. And I'm not even sure that was the correct recipient. I think it's the Hospital Foundation, which is for supporting billing for local folks who can't afford their treatment. Yeah, I don't know that this is our business. We're taken, people are allowed to have their opinion. For me, it's, maybe we need to charge a fee for the town. Maybe there is a fee for the park fund. I think, I think that, and I said this from the beginning in the email, well, you know, I've been very open about my statement on this. I think the two things that is completely reasonable to kind of say, hey, wait, we need to fix this. And I think it's not a stop it. I think it's not a, let's not do it at all. It's a, hey, let's adjust. And the, hey, let's adjust items are safety on the roads and noticing to the people on the route, because, yeah, I'm not a farmer, I don't need to move a combine at like 10:00 a.m. on a Sunday, but some of them do. And they need to know in advance so they can plan around it. As long as they know, I think it's completely reasonable to say, right to harm community or not, walkers, runners, bicyclists should have a chance to use this road too. And like, like you said, it's a pretty dangerous road. This is the one day of the year when they like, watch them runners.
That's not true. I sat and watched it. Year after year, I watch and I see trucks and cars go back, go past so fast that no one slows down for this race. They just keep running, they keep races down the road.
So the fix sounds like signage and... The fix also could be getting in touch with Duchess County 911 and seeing if there's something that you can do to work with us or what would you?
What is that?
Duchess County Emergency Services.
I know that.
Well, we, I don't micromanage this. We are not the enforcement business.
We've had cuts at every intersection that people could...
As I said, maybe we call...
Maybe the issue is that it's not just intersection.
I just said, maybe we need to reach out to Duchess County 911 and Pete Dunn and see if there's more that can be done to, maybe it's getting too big, maybe it's changed, the town's changed, there's more traffic, maybe we just need more enforcement. But back to, I think, Chancy's point, there are a few people here from the neighborhood. Are you totally against this or do you want it to happen with some, with some changes?
Change.
Yeah. All right.
Can I speak?
Sure. Sorry, Chant.
Same point. Good evening, Robert Donaldson. I live on Mill Road and I do have concerns about the safety issue. I know I've spoken to the Town Board about this before, but it was last March, you were here, and at that meeting, I addressed the safety issue on the eastern side of the Van Steenberg Bridge. And there's another curb up on the road about there's no notification, there's no markers, there's nothing warning drivers or runners as to this curb. And it's a dangerous intersection as well as up near the east gate entrance by the Ellis Lee. Now, at that meeting, you said you would address that issue. Although last October, I came back from shopping and I turned on Mill Road off 9. There was police law enforcement there. As I approached the Van Steenberg Bridge, there was a Porto Sand and a young lady, so I stopped and I said, "Are you monitoring the bridge?" She goes, "No," which she pointed to the Porto Sand. But then, a person drove up in a truck who stopped and asked if I had any concerns, and I said, "Yes." "Are you one of the supervisors?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, is there anything, you know, stuck by the bridge, warning drivers and runners what lane to use?" And he goes, "I don't know anything about it." And yet, you said something would be done about it, but nothing was done about it. Now, because of the South Mill Road closure, the road is used by more cars, leaving Rhine Cliff as well as coming in from Route 9 to get to Rhine Cliff. So, we need a safety measure. We need people before the bridge and after the bridge and up by the east gate entrance warning the runners to stay in their lane and drivers coming, wishing to use or even stopping traffic to allow the free flow of cars one at a time with the runners. Something needs to be done before we do have...
More police, more safety.
More safety measures.
All right, so what I'm hearing is everybody's okay with it if we tighten up safety, maybe we look at a fee scheduled for events. Is that sound reasonable to you, Matt?
Totally agree.
All right, is that where everybody hears sort of things?
It's more than hear and correct to say we shouldn't be out of pocket on...
No, not out of pocket. I'm looking about a fee, like, to help our park. So, I'm going to call Bob, Bill Beal, he's the acting commissioner of Duchess County Emergency Services, and I'll talk to the mayor, because the mayor does a lot more events than me do, and see if the county can give more support for safety in this, which would allay a lot of issues, what the cost to you would be for that. And then, I will talk to our rector and, you know, we can think about like a sort of fee structure for events in, on roads. You know, it's different. I mean, if this were the Fern Cliff Turkey Trot, they're a local, you know, that's for the...
And it doesn't cross any major...
No, that's what I'm talking about. This is a for-profit event, which, it's not like I don't, you know, I think it's good, but, you know, oh, yeah, I got it. Sorry. I just thought one out of my head. All right, go ahead.
Are we still taking comments? I would just like to speak in favor.
I'm not really taking comments.
Okay, well, it seems like you were taking comments against...
It's a public, yeah, we're just not a public hearing. I think we're wrapping it up. I think what we've come to say is that we support this. If you want to talk, fine, but we need more safety and we're going to look at a fee for the town.
I would love to see a solution made, because I would like to speak in support of it. I live on West Chestnut, which is also on the route.
What is your name?
Angela.
Do you want to get up and introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Angela Musial. I live at 20 West Chestnut, also on the route. Thank you, Matt, for organizing this event. I love it. We've been in the village for 14 years. I think that this is part of a move to create complete streets, which is actually like forward-thinking, and the idea of car traffic existing with bike traffic with cycling traffic is really forward-thinking. I hear everybody's concerns in terms of the safety issues. One question I have is, do people sign off on a liability if one day they sign up for the race? I love this race. I love the idea of the community working together to exercise healthy habits, and I would like to see a solution to allow us to move forward.
Thanks.
And just one last note. That's Kim Caruso. Kim is the owner of BP in the city. So, Kim is going to be partnering with us on this.
Is this the first year you're partnering with us?
She's involved.
I've been involved in the event for a number of years, and I've also organized large races, like the Duchess County Classic. So I've worked really closely with Bill Beal, who you mentioned, and like, getting in touch with him to work out some...
Are there fees you do on those races that we could do here that would add towards...
Yeah, I mean, I think your, your thought to reach out to emergency services, like, they had a whole, like, a station set up at the Duchess County Classic.
Yeah, they had a whole band, you know...
Yeah. And so we can definitely, like, we're absolutely open to ideas like that. We want to make sure that everyone's as safe as possible too, but it is an event that is really important to our community, like, we have a really happy and friendly...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, so...
We're trying to, you know, respond to our residents who have concerns.
It's a balance, I get it.
Yeah. And complete streets also comes with infrastructure and design, so I totally support that, but this for me is more about the use of our roads and safety on our roads, so, Bob.
I have one question. I seen a, your route on a map.
Yep.
Now, it shows you come down Morton Road and you make a right.
Yep.
That's going down towards where the county has the road closed.
Yes.
Then it ends there.
Yep. Well, it turns around there and comes back.
Okay, so you're going to have people running down the road one way and running up the road the other way.
Yeah. We always, we've done that forever on that road. It actually used to go all the way past...
Bridge.
Yeah, whatever that's...
Cove Road.
Yeah, Cove Road. Yeah.
I just think there's, you know, it's not good to have runners going both ways...
It's not.
On a narrow road.
Yeah, we actually, so what we did this year to accommodate the closure was we ran past the elementary school even further, like, up into the village, but it does get pretty hilly up there.
Past Millwood up to Burger.
Uh, yes.
So you extended that.
Yes, we had to.
I have a call, I have an email out to, to Bob, to the head of the Duchess County DPW. I didn't realize that Gary Cooper, the head of the highway, had retired, so. I'll get in touch with Bob and see what he thinks about South Mill Road, and I'll reach out to Bill Beal, see if we can't come up with more support for safety and think about a fee for the town.
And maybe the road will be open by October.
The road is not going to be open by October of 2025.
We had a conversation...
I guarantee that, yeah.
I got some beachfront for sale in Arizona.
Oceanfront, I hope.
And look, we're, I like, I love Rhinebeck, you know, we've done this for a reason here for many years, like, I think it's great.
I think we're all, I think...
Well, look what we need to...
The consensus is to work with you, to come up with more safety, to figure out a fee for the town. I'm not commenting on the hospital. I have my own issues with for-profit, you know, medicine or the way, medical crisis in this country. All that aside, we'll stay in our lane, pay attention to Rhinebeck and address the concerns that our residents have. I'm sure we can work it out. We'll do some emailing for the next agenda. I don't know that you'll have to come back, but let me reach out to Bill Beal and see what we can do. Does that sound good?
Good.
Great.
Yeah, everybody?
Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Okay, everybody, that's that. Resolution, need a motion for this tab one, we're back for normal. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming. You good? One more, one that makes sense.
We were kind of just interested, what else we could talk about? I was interested in some of the...
And stay!
I was interested in some, I think that Bob's looking for some new stuff here, right?
Yeah. Bob.
Okay, well, we just support whatever Bob asks.
Bob always gets what Bob asks for. He's the, he's the best taking care of highway superintendent in the county. And four, because he's the best highway superintendent in the state.
Part of the street.
Okay, sorry, I got, it's so easy for me to get on top here. Tab one, may I have a motion for resolution 2025-040, purchase of basketball backboards? Gosh, you guys didn't even let me say what it was for, anyone motioning that? Who's motioning that? That would be Chad, that would be Wiki, and that would be an Alan as a second. All in favor? Are there any questions or comments? Does anybody not want you that, what, baseball backboards? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Chad, thanks for all your work on this tip. Any motion for 2025-041 to approve our 2025 recreation department hire?
Motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dana, Dana Colleen. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're doing hires early because we're starting programs earlier. We have the Winter Festival and some other stuff calling up before, actually coming, before the summer. So, you know, we're ramping up our rep programs.
Close the door on the way out, please.
Resolution, may I have a mo, did we vote on that, Department of Laboring? Did we vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for a resolution 2025-042 approving our recreation department winter, winter festival entertainment.
Motion.
Thank you, Colleen.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2025-043, approve the Little League fence request for bids? This is the Lily and pool or just the Little League?
Just the fence, yeah.
Okay, with the backdrop. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Chauncey. This is just for the Little League with the, with the big ball thing. We're doing the pool separately?
For the, the fence for the pool is separate, yes.
Is that coming up too?
Not, not as of right now, no. We're dealing with a little, we're just dealing with...
Will the pool be done this year before?
The kiddie pool?
Yes.
Yes, not a fence though. The kiddie pool is being worked on right now.
We're not replacing the fence to the pool.
There's no fence in...
Okay, it's just this, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. There's a bunch of Bob stuff for Martha. 2025-044, approve highway department purchase of a pressure washer. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any comments or, or, let's get the man a pressure washer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Well, I just want to say, the whole highway department is speaking spam. Just keep something nice shop and ground, so thank you for that. 2025-045, I need a motion to approve the highway department 284 agreement for 2025.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Thank you, Chauncey. If you notice on here, we have one that's TBD. That's because one road was supposed to be South Mill Road, but Bob, Bob, we should maybe wait until the county does what, not South, the Cove Road, on the Cove side, on our side of it.
Yeah.
Because the county could be coming in with huge equipment, so we wanted to keep that a little fluid, so that we're not repaving in case the county does something. It's Hiley Hill Road, not Rain. Hiley is right off Violet Hill, it's, as you're going towards 9G, it's on the, this is right, yeah, it's where the water pressure tank is and it's sort of big houses on the other side of Burger Hill. Yeah, so we've got Hiley, we've got Akron Hook and Cove, well, it's, we said that we want to TBD that, right? For, are you putting Cove in, Bob?
Cove is just going to be done, a short section of it.
Okay.
Up to the bridge?
If you go down to the west entrance to Cove Road...
Right.
Up to the High Park line.
All right, so that won't be affected by the work. So the TBD, the TBD was going to be around where the work is, so we'll, you'll make a recommendation later in the year, and then...
Right.
Okay, what are you thinking, you know? Or do you, you're not going to say it?
No, I don't, but I have a few in mind.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor of a...
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2025-046, highway department to sell a 1989 Case tractor. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Dana.
Aye.
Alan, thank you. Any comments or questions?
It's stuck in low gear.
It's old.
Huh?
It's old. It's like high school reunion time.
Yeah.
Oh.
But it's stuck in low gear and I had my mechanic look at it and he said I got to split the tractor and all that. It's a 1989 tractor, so it's well past its service life.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2025-047, highway department to sell the Schmidt air compressor. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dana. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2025-048 to appoint Mr. Farber to the Board of Assessment Review. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Chad, and I'll take Dana. Mark Farber applied. I think he's a retired accountant and the chair of the Board of Assessment Reviews, Steve Jenkins, met with him and gave him a thumbs up, thought he'd be a great addition. So Gina's being reappointed and Mark is a new appointed.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So that's how we do it. We get an application and we refer it to the chair. The chair usually interviews with another board member and makes a recommendation to the board. Okay, tab 10, 2025-049, appointing De La Vega to the Conservation Advisory Board. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey and Alan. Thank you. Again, Vincente, De La Vega, applied, and he met with George Baker and maybe one other person, and they're enthusiastic about his interest, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 2025-050, I need a motion for writer to our Panda contract. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey.
Second.
May I have a second? Thanks. This is the up there bid a little bit, up there budget a little bit, I have it incorporated into our 2025 budget, and this is just allowing, all in favor? into our 2025 budget, and this is just allowing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2025-051 to amend the resolution 025-030, hiring Ed Bueller as our cemetery groundskeeper.
Motion.
Thank you, Dana.
Second.
Take Chad. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Aye.
And then, we have another new hire for Jeff Vincent to, as our cemetery caretaker and town hall cleaner. Motion, I mean, resolution 2025-052, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dana. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?